All right, I'm going to call to order this regular city council meeting on Monday, February 10th, 2020. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, you can roll, please. Roland?
Here.
Bizer?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Weiss?
Here.
Rhimes?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
I did, we have had communication from Councilman Bizer and Councilman Weiss that they are unable to attend this evening.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Bizer and Mr. Weiss.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And now I am looking for an approval of the agenda. Holly, do we need to modify up at the top? We didn't have the voice outlets here, is that? Yeah. We'll just cross that out. Any other changes that anybody needs to have made to the agenda or push through as a seminar?
Well, you should go through the agenda as amended by deleting item two, the voice slots.
All right.
Sorry.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anybody out there that would like to come forward? All right. Moving forward, we have a presentation of the Redevelopment Ready Community Baseline Evaluation by Brett Hanlon. Come on forward.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for being here this evening.
Good evening, Council. I'm Brett Hanlon. I'm a redevelopment ready communities planner for Region Seven. And so I am your point of contact for the RRC program.
Great.
Tonight, I'm going to quickly go over the findings of a baseline report that I conducted for Williamson. I'm then going to outline some next steps you guys can take to align with the best practices and become certified as a redevelopment ready community.
Great.
So to begin, I want to provide some context.
All right, I'm going to have him pop the light out just so we can get a little bit better visual. And can you see this?
Yep.
Yeah. Is everybody else good with that? Great, thanks.
Pop phone ready?
Right, thank you.
So, RRC is part of the community development division at the MEDC. MEDC is really comprised of three different divisions. You have your business development, which focuses on your large-scale business attraction from not only all across America, but all across the world, trying to get businesses and jobs to Michigan. Pure Michigan is marketing and communication. They sit right next to me at work. They focus on the marketing and the tourism and drawing people to the state. Community development, which houses the RRC program, focuses on working with communities, developing vibrancy and a sense of quality of life, sense of place, and sort of addressing economic development from that angle. And so by doing that, we're sort of able to address economic development from multiple different angles.
Great.
So this slide is showing that redevelopment ready communities is the foundation for community development. And I want to talk about this in two different ways. From a community level, we look at your long-range plans, your zoning code, your site plan review processes, economic development, how you're marketing the city. So it's really a foundation for a lot of the things that you guys are doing. It's a good foundation for your day-to-day planning, zoning, and economic development. Also, from the MEDC's perspective, engagement in the program and making progress through it, well, it's used as a priority factor for a range of community development incentives. You guys have a traditional downtown, so you're already eligible for the whole gamut of those. And there are incentives to becoming certified through RRC, but I'll talk about that at the end. But yeah, it's used as sort of a foundational element for the MEDC, too. This is what we at the MEDC refer to as the Business Talent Place Connection. And this sort of illustrates kind of what I've been getting at. If you take a look at the navy blue, talent wants place, you go clockwise, place needs business, business needs talent. And so where business development, I guess, is focused on creating the jobs, we're creating the places where those businesses want to be located and then their employees want to live, work, and play. So this is just showing that it's all connected. RRC is guided by eight principles. I want to hit on a few of them. It's a self-help program, so as much as I'm going to try to work with you guys and provide direct technical assistance, as they call it, it really is a self-help program, so I'm not going to be able to complete a lot of the tasks for you. But I have a wealth of resources, and I sure am going to try to work with you guys and provide ideas where I can, and certainly direction for how you guys can reach certification. Another one I like to hit on is transparency and predictability. I really believe in this stuff. The more clear your zoning code can be and your processes, more likely an applicant's going to come in and be confident that they're going to be able to have something approved or at least get feedback in a timely manner, and they're not going to make bad investments. They're able to be confident that they're going to have support from you guys. So those two really go together. And then implementation, a common theme throughout the best practices is implementation. So I think I touched on it in the master plan. You guys do that really well. Your master plan outlines implementation actions or projects and then responsible parties and priorities or timeframes. And so that was real good, and I highlight that in this presentation coming up. So right now, there's 281 communities that are either engaged or certified in the program. Thirty-eight are certified, so they've fully aligned with the best practices. It's hard to read, but I think it's 55 there still waiting on the baseline report because we had a change in policy at the MEDC where it was required for a lot of incentives to get in, so a lot of communities came in all at once. And then 168 or 188 have received their baseline reports, so you guys just switched from the blue dot to the red diamond. And this, instead of listing out all 281, this is Region Seven, and so you guys can see there that you guys are now the red diamond. Don't even try to read this slide. We need, we're working on changing it, but this is a flow chart that shows each step in the process is really kind of my job in a nutshell. You guys right now are right here with the baseline reports being presented with the community. From here, you can work towards certification based, yeah, based on your staff time and resources. There's no deadline where you guys have to become certified or else. So it's really up to you guys. We do ask that the city council passes a resolution. I call it Resolution Two because you guys have passed one to get into RRC. And it's basically saying that I didn't scare you away with the recommendations, and you guys are still willing to work towards certification. And I'll follow up with Cory, and I'll send him some examples how other communities have written the resolution. So there's 40 different best practice criteria, and they're categorized into these six categories. So I'm quickly just going to explain. Number one, I like to call it the long-range plans because it takes a look at a master plan, a plan for downtown, capital improvements plan, and then public outreach plan. Zoning regulations is two, and that's pretty self-explanatory. It's your zoning code. Does that support the direction your master plan is talking about? And is it clear? Is the, you know, the variance process clear? Is the rezoning process clear? And site plan review, all of that. So that's two. Three is taking a look at what land uses are approved administratively or by the planning commission or which are going to the city council. Is that the way you guys want it? And so that's taking a look at your site plan review process. Recruitment and education is taking a look at, for staff and officials, we want you to have a plan going forward about how you guys are continuing on with your professional development or just staying apprised of best practices and hot topics. We're going on in Williamson. Be proactive in identifying opportunities for training and then working towards goals that you guys set for yourselves. Number five is really marketing and economic development, and I'm going to talk about that here in a little bit. And then redevelopment ready sites. This is an interesting one because it used to be best practice five, and we moved it back because we have a redevelopment services team now, which is a three-person team with a guy who's very well-versed in all of MEDC's incentives. He's an old, you might know Nate Scramlin. He used to be a community assistance team specialist, and now he's heading up the redevelopment services team. He's a historic architect, and then a guy from the building trades that's doing a lot of the cost estimating. And they're bridging the gap from sort of the long-range planning, the big-picture things. And then they're helping communities that are on the verge of certification identify sites, write requests for qualifications. There's money available if you guys do get to the precipice of certification. There's money available for like traffic studies, marketing studies, even environmental remediation. But their bread and butter lately has been writing requests for qualifications and having site showcases for some of these sites and then inviting all the developers that are in their network and sort of saying, here it is, these are, everyone's at the table. This is what the investment opportunity is and who's interested. So this is a snapshot of the findings of the baseline report. It's very good. You guys should be proud. It's a testament to the good work you guys are doing here. Yeah, what stands out is the bigger master plan was fully aligned, downtown plan, and then all of the zoning code, which is great. And so, yeah, great, great work. Number six is the sites thing that I had mentioned, and that's this whole bottom row. And that's a strange one because we're pretty specific with what we're asking, and so almost all the communities that I've reviewed are right in it. So a couple of things that I want to hit on that you guys are doing really well. The master plan, it was adopted in 2015, so it's still current within that five-year window. It has a great existing conditions section. You identify growth areas within your future land use map. It's got a great zoning plan, and then, as I mentioned before, the implementation actions are not only listed, but they have timeframes and responsible parties, and so you guys really nailed that one. Another one, the zoning code, this is my favorite one as an old zoning administrator. Yeah, it does a great job of supporting the goals of the master plan. One example was you guys have design standards, and then in your master plan, you talk about historic preservation, and then the design standards are to make sure that the character's maintained as downtown redevelops. Housing, you guys allow, I believe it was upper-floor housing units within mixed-use buildings. Townhomes were also expressly listed in accessory dwelling units, so you guys met that best practice. And then non-ordinaire transportation by allowing or requiring multi-use pathways within the Williamson Road overlay district, that hit one of the criteria. And then bicycle parking was required when parking lots have 10 or more spaces, and that was another one that was real good. Economic development strategy. This one is interesting because you guys are doing all sorts of things. You have your DDA, the EDC. You outline different goals in the master plan, and so you guys really have a lot of the content that we're looking for. But what, the way, the reason you didn't align is because we asked that communities create like a coordinating overarching document that talks about how do all these things fit together? And then, again, back to the implementation, we recommend that you get down into the nitty gritty so much that you're talking about who's going to do what by when. And again, that goes back to the coordination when you have, you have multiple different elements going on. It's good to just think holistically about it. Opportunities for improvement. Yeah, the capital improvements plan, this one stood out because you guys had been green on the first two, and then really this was, I think, your only red one. And it's just because with the best practices and the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, both call for six-year CIPs. So if we're not making the six-year up, that's what it says. And so by, yeah, thinking about how you're going to allocate your funds six years out, not only does it then tie in with your master plan, but you can use that in discussions with a prospective developer or applicant, hey, we're going to be doing this in a couple of years. This could tie into this development agreement in this way, and it gives you guys leverage, not only in negotiating, but it's also just, yeah, sound planning to think about the finances in that way. So from here, as I mentioned, I'll be in touch with Cory about this second resolution. And then, yeah, just to reiterate, you guys can work at your own pace. It's nice that you guys are relatively close, so I had been here once before, and I would love to come back. And especially, I know Cory had mentioned the zoning code. He was really interested to see what our feedback was on it. Even though it's all green, doesn't mean we can't work together, and I, yeah, I would love to talk further about that. Yeah, another thing Cory is, we used to do quarterly progress reports. Now it's more of an interactive, real-time software called Trello. And I'm not sure if I, maybe I didn't set you up on that yet, but yeah, I'll send you a link probably tomorrow. And it's a good way of tracking everything. You can share it with as many people as you'd like, and then it's, I'll have to go through it, go over it with you, but you can ask questions through it, upload documents, or you really just move cards from incomplete, I guess it says, to ready for RRC review and then green or completed. So I want to highlight some of the value there is in participating in the program. There's no cost. It's, yeah, so it's free. I like to highlight the inherent value and have in the third-party objective perspective on everything. So the baseline report has not only recommendations, but it has, well, I took a stab at prioritizing what you guys could do first and second. That's not set in stone. Feel free to amend that as you see fit, but there is some value in some of that. The ongoing partnership, the certification, well, you guys are engaged in the program, which is great. If you were to become certified, that's sort of a, it's a big marketing piece. You can say, we're ready for business. There's even street signs that we give you. Technical assistance match funding. So, yeah, you guys are eligible for matching grant funds. So MEDC would pay 75% of the cost for any of those projects that were not green. And even if, yeah, there could even be a discussion about a zoning code if you guys were interested in that because we don't want you to just meet the minimum. We're in this to try to help communities in the best way possible. So we could have a discussion about the zoning code, but really typically it's for things that you guys are not aligned in. There is, once you guys are certified, I mentioned the redevelopment services team, that's a benefit. And then there is continued technical assistance. So even once you guys, you know, if you were to leverage some of this technical assistance money and the redevelopment services team, it's a continuing thing, so you're never really maxing out or depleting, you know, those funds. It's an ongoing thing. And then I had hit on this a little bit before, but it's used for, it's used for prioritizing the site-specific grants. So some of the gap funding that MEDC offers for specific projects, it looks real good if you guys are at least engaged in the program, which you are. So I would like to encourage all of you to, well, you can ask me any questions, but there's also a lot of information on our website, myplace.org. And this is my contact information. Please feel free to get in touch with me, but yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have right now.
New guy.
Okay.
Been here on city council now just for a, you know, month or so, filling the spot, but been on planning commission for a few years here in Williamson. You know, we've often talked about our 96 corridor. You know, there's things that we got to do. We're looking at numerous options to, you know, stimulate development, always in Williamson, you know, hence presence, right? But I'm wondering, so with your program, I got a couple of questions. First, being once certified, is that something that has to be recertification annually? Once certified or recertified? How does that work?
So it's good for three years, and there, yeah, there's really bi-annual check-ins. So every six months, I'd probably give Cory a call and just make, you know, learn what's going on, what's changed, do you have any questions? And then, yeah, at the end of three years, there's like a recertification report that I would write, typically a one or two pager, and then identifying any misalignments or if the RRC best practices have changed. You guys would create a work plan, and you could just state, we want to address this in the next year, this in the next two years, and that's how you become recertified.
Sounds good. So secondly, so surrounding, I'm assuming other, as you showed on that map, there's certified communities. I mean, can you give any, just sort of 40,000-foot examples of their success rate in getting the certification and what benefits they've achieved out of that?
Yeah, well, gosh, Lansing comes to mind. They, I was just at one of their site showcases the other day. So they, they reached certification and held a site showcase, and so they had, Bob Trizeis from LEAP was there, Pat Gillespie. We wish we had the Board of Water and Light people there because there was a good question that came up about that. But they were able to say, you know, this is, look, everyone's here in the same room. We're all committed to working with you guys. Pat Gillespie was able to say, you know, they've been a pleasure to work with. We had Brandon Green there, the land bank was there. And so getting everybody in the same room, I think, really helped some of the other developers get a good feeling about it. And they got a couple of proposals, and so hopefully that site will turn over. But yeah, that's, yeah, so Lansing has had success in that area.
Like a hard return on investment, sort of time management, investment into it, growth rate increase, I mean, any tangible data?
So there was, yeah, Roseville, it was, gosh, I want to say Scott Atkins, the city manager, attributed like $90 million in investment to the program, and it'd be great to take credit for all that. And it's hard, you know, it's real hard to say that that Kroger located here because of our development review process, but he had no problem saying that, so. I don't know of good numbers other than I think it was 90 million the first year after certification. But, but yeah, he had no problem giving us the credit for it. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? All right.
Just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just verifying, there's no cost to the city with participation or certifications or recertification to it?
No, no.
That's a real big win, and I like the fact that you partner up with everybody. I mean, you know, LEAP, you know, which we've been a membership now for three years, so I think that's great. I know Cory's had good things to say, and I know he'll bring back more to us as this keeps moving along, and so, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Coming out and presenting to us.
Yep.
One thing I would add is, you know, while there's not a direct out-of-pocket cost, there's certainly a great deal of time that goes into trying to create this certification process. One of the things that stands out to me is the technical assistant money, and I guess there's some more I need to learn about when you can use that. But we are due for a master plan update soon, and so part of my thought process was talking to you about that, helping with that process, although we are currently green, so that we can talk offline about that. And then the other pieces, it may be a while until we see a direct benefit. We get questions often about the resources through MEDC, whether it's rental rehab money or Commercial Redevelopment Act, which we're going to talk about later today. And so we field those questions. We haven't had anything land yet, but in order for us to get those incentives through MEDC, we have to have this, at least be engaged, I think, is the process.
Right.
So we're engaged, and we'll work with you.
And I think it's a good path that we're going down. And yes, while it does take staff time and everything, I think the benefit will, you know, be great for us in the long run.
I think just reaching out to you as a best resource for best practices would be well, too, because with our planning commission that we go through, we have a lot of different people coming in to look at developing businesses and that. But having, whether it's a checklist or whatever other communities have, to streamline and make it as simple as possible.
Yep.
We'd love to get those ideas.
Yep, and that's one of the great things about government, is they're all public documents. And so, yeah, in our online library of resources, we had, we've, yeah, we categorize all of them. Who's meeting the best, who's doing the best practice really well? And so you can go and check that out and see examples and take from it whatever you want and, yeah, learn from whatever has been done already.
All right. Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you again as we keep moving down this path.
Yep.
Appreciate it. All right. Yeah. Put that on the right, thank you. We have our council meeting minutes of January 27th, 2020. I'm looking for a motion to move that forward, to approve that.
I make a motion to approve minutes submitted.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So, quick question.
Quick question.
On minutes.
Yes, go ahead.
Is there a way in the accounts payable section that we can add the timeframe as well as the reference number in which that approval was made? Because as you know, we have posting dates, right? And so I think minutes typically are historically there to do a quick perusal, find out where you want to do your date.
Sure.
And so having the timeframe there, I feel like would be helpful.
So for instance, like January 24th through?
Well, exactly. I'm noticing that.
January 31st.
Looking ahead, like we have stuff for January 24th, but we're approving stuff from a meeting that's in place on January 27th. So I think it's important to note the date range of those.
I can do that.
Just to continue to be a pain in the butt for you here.
So when he asks for the motion for approval, you want him to list the check numbers and the timeframe dating from two?
Even if it's just recorded in minutes.
Okay.
We can even just record it minute-wise, doesn't have to say it, say it out loud. I think it's helpful to know the timeframe that crossed over those reference numbers.
Sure, sure. Holly, is that?
I think the app comes on.
Because your assumption would be, it would be the previous couple of weeks or last month, but that's not always the case.
Okay, well, I could also state it in the fact that, like, I'd like to make a motion to approve check 7282, which starts on 1/24/2020 through check, kind of the last date of those checks.
Does that?
As long as it shows up in the minutes with that date range, I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
Because again, this meeting we have.
Does that sound?
Moving forward? Yeah, okay.
Just an opportunity for improvement, kind of thing?
Yeah.
Just throw that out there.
Okay.
Do you want to ask about the document?
Well, we'll do that once we get there.
Once we get to the task.
There's more to come there, but.
All right, so that is duly noted for moving forward in our future minutes. So with that being said, we had a motion and we had a second for approval of the council meeting minutes of January 27th. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving right forward, that counts payable, Noah.
Thank you. I had a chance to review the accounts payable, and I reviewed, starting with check 72828, which was issued date 1/24/2020, through the last check, which was check number 72866, which was issued on 1/31/2020. I had a lot of conversations with Cory, raised some questions, and we'll review those at this time. I will highlight a couple that I asked. One was for check 72830, which was to Shellup Motors for the raw sewage pump. Three required for $5,000.20, and Cory has some explanations about that, so, and Cory got to leave the court to you on that one.
Okay. So this was the repair of one of our three raw sewage pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. There are three pumps. They don't typically all run at the same time, but when we have a high water event, like we had a couple of weeks ago when the rivers were high, we had two running and the third went down. So we had an option to either replace completely or to rebuild. It was more cost-effective to rebuild by about half, but that's where you see that high expense. And that's essentially the pumps that take the raw sewage from where it's coming in and pumps it through the plant, through the process. You will see, and Noah may get to these, there's a number of these that have happened in the wastewater plant, whether it's for plant equipment or lab supplies. Many of them. Many of these were anticipated in our budget. We specifically requested higher amounts for lab supplies and equipment maintenance and repair. But the fact is, a couple of months ago, we had about a ten thousand dollar grid chamber replacement. That was not planned.
Right.
A number of these were planned. A pump going down was not. And so you, you'll see more on this as we move forward. We've actually got a meeting tomorrow to run through where we're at as of the end of January and planning through the end of June. So we do expect that there will be a budget amendment that will come forward and we'll have a chance to kind of dig into that a little more after we get to that.
So what Cory was referencing was on page two, it's check seven two eight five two, which was the new, it's not a muffler, but it's a type of furnace for the lab for drying samples. And that was twenty nine, twenty nine hundred and seventy five dollars.
And then also the wastewater treatment plant, lab bench town multimeter.
Yep.
So, yeah.
So those all combined.
Lot of wastewater treatment plant for expenses this time around.
One of the other questions that came up that we talked about was snow removal. We had some additional costs for that and Cory, I'll put it back together.
So we had our snowstorm, I think it was January eighteenth through the twentieth. We did have additional assistance from Beck and Stevens during that. Part of that was for downtown snow hauling. Another part of that was we had a staff vacancy for a week. And so we had to have assistance during that. So that piece of it was a little unusual. But that's where you see that come in. And that was again for the, the downtown snow hauling, which goes to our D D A fund. For that.
And another question that Deanne brought up to me was there was a check number seven two eight four one, which is tree services for eight hundred dollars. And when I reviewed the bill, it was for removing two damaged trees or unsafe trees. One was on South Puckaman Wallace. Don't quite remember the other location, but they were very dangerous trees that were removed for that.
Both in the right way, I'm sure.
Yep. Yeah. I think the other one was at Taylor and Little. We had two that came down there.
So is there any other questions for Cory or myself?
Yes. Thank you. So is there a typical lag time from this date column to when we would see it appear on a actual meeting agenda? For example, we're at a February tenth meeting and reviewing January twenty fourth numerous expenses where we had a January twenty seventh meeting. Why, why would those not have been on January twenty seventh? And so I'm assuming there's some sort of cruel lag time. Posting date versus transaction date, I'm just curious what that is.
Where that comes into play is, so your January twenty seventh meeting, the agenda for that meeting is finalized on the Thursday before at noon. So we get the packets out typically on Thursday afternoon. We post that packet on our website and we mail them out to city council. And our A P runs are typically done on that Friday. So if you fast forward to last week, as we advanced to the February tenth meeting, whatever that Friday was. I think it was the seventh.
Yep.
That's that cutoff. That's why you see that two week lag typically.
And the second question is, what were checks seven two eight two one to seven two eight two seven?
Oh, because there's a gap in numbers. Sometimes that happens.
It's like a payroll thing?
It could be that or a portion of the check. I, I don't have it right here in front of me.
I think it'd be, just for documentation purposes, it'd be nice to keep those numbers totally connected. And those are just payroll checks? Then yeah, that's my recommendation to just include that in a ledger that, that was payroll. If so.
And that was seven two eight two one.
Yeah, because last week we added on seven two eight two oh.
Because we've never listed payroll. And we've never, never would.
I don't review that.
It's annoying detail orientation, isn't it?
I know, I'm just trying to.
Right, right.
It helps in, on trails.
Sure.
Make sure we are connected dots. Yeah, cool. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Noah.
So that was my motion.
Thank you.
Can you read the motion back to me after we reset the plan, please?
Do we have a second?
Oh, yeah.
Second.
Thank you.
There we go.
Motion by Ballinger, second by Ryan, to approve the accounts payable as presented. Got a total amount of two hundred fifty thousand, five hundred forty seven and fifteen cents. Reference number seven two eight two eight with the date of one twenty four, twenty twenty through seven two eight six six with the date of one thirty one, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Hallie. Okay. Would you call the roll for that then, please?
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, we have one action item for this evening. It is the resolution adopting property exemption guidelines. Cory?
So this is an annual piece of legislation that comes forward from our city assessor. Essentially, it lays out the process by which somebody can see the poverty exemption through the board review. The resolution reads very much like a memo or a policy document, hence why there's not a cover memo. We update it annually because the eligibility requirements change on an annual basis based on the United States Office of Management and Budget. So again, this is something that we typically will request approval of on an annual basis.
Rachel's been here a couple of different years and presented, so thank you very much, Cory. Any questions?
Dan?
Do we have a ballpark number on how many people request the poverty exemption every year or?
I would have to get back to him.
Okay. And do we have any, is this pretty much a blanket deal? All municipalities do have the same requirements? Or is there?
Different levels based on your communities and population?
The communities change it or is it, this is the recommendation, this is, I'm not trying to be difficult.
Yeah, no. I believe that this is fairly routine across the city.
All right. Thank you.
Quick question. Is there like a federal funding thing that replaces the, the tax revenue that would come from the?
There's nothing, nothing.
Any other questions? I'm looking for that motion to move it forward.
I make a motion to approve the resolution adopting property exemption guidelines. For twenty twenty.
Thank you.
I'll still say.
All right. Thank you. Any other further discussion? Hallie?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
All right. Moving into discussion items, we have the draft economic development incentive schedule. Thank you, Cory, for putting this together.
So we had our presentation at the last meeting regarding abatements for taxes as well as other incentives. And essentially wanted to bring back what a draft schedule would look like before we brought it for action. So you'll see the makings of a policy. There's just a brief policy statement. And then a schedule that, you know, quite frankly, is just based on comparison of a couple of other communities. I found a couple of different ways that people do this. One is to just have specific criteria with a number of years. I saw another example where, I mean, it was like an eight page document and you pulled up points up to a hundred and you got a number of years based on that. I thought keeping it simple was the way to go. So you'll see that the only thing that we were recommending is a schedule for those state authorized abatements, which is your industrial facilities exemption and then the two commercial type programs. The key area where I'm looking for some feedback is, it's page ten A, page four of the packet, the abatement schedule, it's the table. It's number three, which is our private development objectives. These are fairly subjective. I pulled these based on our master plan, our council goals and our downtown development plan. And so you'll see that we heavily weighted location in the industrial park. I think that's where a great deal of our conversation focused at the last meeting. And then to a lesser extent, and these are going to be more of your downtown goals, is the redevelopment of a vacant, abandoned, blighted building if it includes historic preservation and then new use type dwelling units. So again, there's some subjectivity to how this table got formulated. And what I'm really looking for is, is there something that we're missing based on council's goals? Or something that we weighted too heavily or not enough before we finalize the packet?
What was the maximum number of, like, now we had discussed the maximum number of years two weeks ago. What was that?
So it depends on the, the exemption for industrial facilities. And one of the commercials, it's twelve years. And then there's a, one of the other commercial ones, it's ten years.
The reason I'm asking, and I'm, I'm not saying, I think you have to work to get those. I think there has to be a large investment. I'm just seeing the maximum we have on our table is currently seven. If we're going up against a community that's offering the max and it's a, it's a very large investment, I think we should be prepared to go to the max just to.
Yeah. So Tim, Tim is right. And actually, it's not stated there specifically. But the idea is that if you, let's say you have a five, a five million dollar investment, you get seven years. But you're also creating fifteen jobs.
Yeah.
You get two.
Okay.
And if you're out and if it's, yeah, okay. So one and two could be added together, but not one, two and three? Or could three factor in as well?
Yes, it could.
Oh.
But, but it's going to exceed the ten or the twelve years.
Correct.
Correct. Oh, okay.
If you look at the maximum, seven and four and three, that's fourteen.
Yes. And there, there is a statement at the bottom, the total number of checks they have here shall not exceed this statutory limit.
Yep. So these can be added.
But I think there should be a statement about the cumulative.
Okay.
So statutory limits are like state law saying, you know, municipality can just go as a blanket, whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's, that's that twelve or ten based on the program.
You would have the downtown development area that where people could receive abatement as well. So are you talking about facade grants and stuff like this?
No, I'm just talking about those. So Cory, when it comes to the D D A downtown, there's a whole different role of taxation and all that. I don't know anyone that's, since I've been here, that hasn't had a tax abatement in the D D A area that I've ever. Or that I know of.
We do not have any of these state tax abatements in our downtown district. We, we only have two on the books.
Right.
And they're in the industrial park.
So my question would is, you know, I, I understand the opportunity to do that. But that also takes off the D D A and their funding that we weren't yet able to do.
Right. Right. Well, keep in mind that you, you can't get an abatement for existing. It's only for new investors.
Right.
So your, your taxable value is not going to decrease. Essentially what would happen under either of those commercial abatements, which would be eligible in the downtown, your tax rate would be frozen at the pre-investment rate. So we would not lose what we're here.
What about the sale of a property? Does that come as new or is that existing or?
Like the only one that probably would have qualified would have been River View. Correct. If they would have asked for a payment, because that was brand new, River's Edge.
Right.
But the, the commons wouldn't have counted because that was an existing building, correct? But River's Edge was a new build.
Yeah. So they could have requested or they could have asked, right?
That is true. However, an existing building could apply for one if they're increasing the value of the property by doing some kind of renovations. And typically that has to be asked for and approved before the renovations.
Right. Right.
I think, I think the key with this is that you want to be ready for when you have those savvy developers that are coming in and asking those questions. You know, but frankly, we're not, we're not going to go just operate.
Right. Right.
These dollar ranges, how do we come about those?
I stole it from Larry.
I mean, you know, because sort of back to, you know, Dan, you know, question is, are those too high? Do we want those to be lower to encourage growth? I don't know.
Right.
That's kind of my thought. I.
You know, so that's another angle we could take to.
My thought is fifty percent of anything we're, of something we're not getting now is fifty percent more. You know, we're.
Yeah.
That's kind of my.
It's about getting it started.
Yeah.
You know? And, and then down the line, as it prospers and grows, that's, that's the benefit of the community. But it's about, I think, the initial growth of the community. I think however we can make it the most attractive we should. I mean, what, what would you like in a five million dollar project too? Right? Like.
I think a lot of jobs.
Yeah.
You know.
But over that, should be like a twenty parcel housing development. I mean, like, what is an example of? I keep thinking of the ninety, ninety six corridor, right? Which is what we're talking about here for the most part, I think. And what, what goes in there that would be equivalent to five million plus?
So as an example, I'm going to use our industrial park. So the Centurion building, I believe its, its fair market value per our assessor records is about ten million dollars. So that, that is one property that, you know, I think presents itself well to the community. That is far above what the dollar amount here is.
Too unfair?
I think it's on the right.
Attractive.
But, but again, you know, in the development of this, there, you know, we've just looked at what other places have done. And so I would say it's very flexible as far as what we want to do.
I'd love to lowball it out of the gate, right? Get it all and then deal with it in seven years.
I think this is a good start. I mean, I don't know if there's other municipalities that you want to take a look at what their capital investment scale is. And a municipality that has the same, you know, demographics as ours, the same similarity as an industrial park, what are they doing and offering? I mean, because if we're taking something and saying, okay, well, East Lansing, because, you know, they've got research and design going out because of the frips there and everything, yeah, you're probably going to hit that five billion dollar mark and go much higher. But, you know.
I guess I think there's communities out there that have completely just low, low ball.
Sure, because they want to bring in and attract.
Are there consequences to that?
A detriment to us?
I, I think it, it just depends on the community. So I made this point in the last session, which is, I'll give an example that I know personally where I used to work. We did not have a policy and we had a request, you know, I don't remember the dollar amount, but it was not millions of dollars. It was an addition. They asked for the I F E, the industrial facilities exemption. They got twelve years, you know, the council was more than willing to support them. They were homegrown people that were expanding a very neat business in the industrial park there. But I think in our case, I think having something on the books is better.
And how much of that is negotiable once it's on the books? Are we allowed to go outside that number? Once we do put it on the books? Because there's that side of it too.
Yeah. Once the industrial facilities or the commercial type abatement is approved, I don't think there's any going back to, to lower it. I do think that you, they can ask for an extension. So if they got something less than the state law, if it's something less than twelve, they can come back and ask for an extension at a later time. Is my understanding.
One, one thing I'd be curious to know, because there are the two largest developments in the last years that I've worked. One was the new build, River's Edge, and one was the total renovations of the commons. Based on the table we have now, what would they qualify for?
Sure.
That's fair. A little bit of work to take home and come back to us.
I, I think this is good, which you put together. I think it's a very good thing that we're putting it on paper because like you said, without having it on paper, people will come forward. They almost always get the maximum. So putting forward criteria and, okay, you hit these things and this is what you get. You know, and if you can bump that development up a little more, maybe you can.
I think everything's really kind of starting to align where we have a really good package to offer for what if people want to come in. You know, with our membership with LEAP, what we're trying to do with redeveloping the right communities and, you know, putting this together.
It's on the language too. It's all in the language, too, right? If, if someone has a three-phase project that's funded only for one, are we going to take the totality of those three phases that are go five, and I think, so I, I think that will be in the details, right?
Yeah.
How we, how we write it up, I think is extremely important, while not discouraging people.
And I think to that point, one of the biggest pieces of this is that in order to qualify for these abatements, the building has to reside in a district. And so it's typically a two-step process. If the district doesn't exist, then the district is created, and it's up to the city what that district encompasses.
Yeah.
Um, so I actually don't know if our previous industrial facilities exemptions captured the whole industrial park, or if it was just specific to that parcel. Once that district is created, to Jeff's point, if there was an expansion, the process is a little bit more streamlined, because you don't have to create, you don't have to expand the district if it captures the whole parcel.
Right.
Um, so that was the experience I had up at Marlet. There was an expansion, and they got an IFT just on the expanded, uh, property. And it was a, it was a good process, you know, but I did say to myself, it, it would have been helpful to have some kind of guideline. Um, because absent that, then it just was.
Yeah.
And, and maybe it shouldn't have been.
Right.
You know, maybe it could have been eight.
Okay. Good work started, thank you.
All right. So we will bring back, uh, a slightly clarified schedule. My anticipation is that it will be for action.
Okay.
And if there's any final, um, questions there, we can deal with them there. The, the second piece of this, um, I won't spend a great deal of time on, but I did reference in the last meeting that, uh, there is an option locally to have a fee waiver or percentage discount on impact fees or connection charges for the utility system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, decided after a lot of thought and discussion not to recommend doing that. However, um, I did put in some information about where we stand with our impact fees. Um, that's often a, a fee that, you know, we get questions about. Um, and so we actually had, uh, Tom Tracyak, who's our municipal advisor through Home Law. They typically help us with bond issuances, uh, but they do rate studies, and they actually did the city's last big rate study, which we continue to use, and asked him for some guidance, and so you can see in there, um, we actually end up being a little short on the water system and a little high on the sewer system. And so we have some decisions to make, I wanted to get the information out in front of you, but I do anticipate that as part of our current budget process that will start really coming to you in April, um, as part of our fee resolutions, we will be looking at those and having more discussion. So we'll have that for now.
Thank you. Well, we'll just keep moving right along, now we don't have any correspondence received, so we'll head right into department head reports. Cory, your city manager's report is great, lots of things. Anybody have any questions, or would you like to expand on anything?
Nothing further.
Okay, any questions? No? All right, great, thank you so much. Chief, you're sitting over there all.
Uh, nothing to report.
Nothing to report, all right, well, thank you for being here. All right. Uh, committee and subcommittee reports. Anyone attend any of their board meetings that they'd like to share information?
Is that more coming up?
Okay. All right, uh, moving right along, we have audience participation. Anybody on the audience that would like to come forward, maximum of five minutes for presentation? Journalism students, they're just maybe asking us questions, they have to be adjourned. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move right along then, council member comments, Mr. Roland.
No, thank you.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Ball. Um, I will just say again that our DPW is just doing a fantastic job with all the snow that has fallen since Groundhog's Day with prediction of an early spring. Um, it looks like we're, uh, going to probably see about another two to four, uh, Wednesday through Thursday. So just a reminder regarding snow removal, street parking, it makes our DPW, uh, employee and staff's jobs so much easier, um, when we can, uh, enforce that no parking on city streets so that they can get that snow moved. Um, hopefully, spring is right around the corner, we'll keep our fingers crossed for that. Um, but other than that, I will go ahead and call this meeting adjourned at seven thirty.